We're always ready to go here. Good evening and welcome to the Planning and Zoning Meeting for the City of Smyrna. Today is Monday, September 12th, 2022. At 6:00 PM, this meeting is called to order. For those of you who joined us for the first time, this meeting will be conducted much like a council meeting. As such, each application will include a presentation from city staff, followed by a question and answer session between staff and the board. After the staff's presentation, we'll have the applicant present their case and answer any questions from the board. Once all the questions have been satisfied, we'll then have an opportunity for anyone in attendance that would like to come forward and speak in favor of or opposition to said application. At that time, we ask that you come forward one at a time, state your name and address, sign the sign-in sheet at the podium with just your name and address, and please direct all your comments to the board. If there's any questions you have that you'd like addressed from the applicant, we'll do our best to get those answered when we have them come back up and follow up. At this time, we'd also like to ask that you silence your phones. Thank you. The first item on our agenda is item 2022-444. This is zoning request is Z22-009 to allow for rezoning from RD to R15, landlots 553 and 554, .05 acres at 1487 Springwood Drive, DNR Real Estate Solutions, Inc., and Kyle Vincent is the applicant. Mr. Staub's the background, please.
Good evening. Joey Staub's, Planner 2. This is rezoning case Z22-009. The applicant is Kyle Vincent. Your recommendation will go to Mayor and Council on October 17th. The subject property is 1487 Springwood Drive. The segment of this parcel that we're talking about is about .05 acres, so although under 2,000 square feet, it is currently undeveloped. It's adjacent to a duplex property, and they need to rezone it from RD to R15 to assemble it with the property that runs on Ashwood. The future land use of this segment is medium high density, so we're recommending it be lowered to low-density residential. This is the area of the property that we're talking about. It will be assembled in this property that faces Ashwood Drive, so it'd be the rear of his property and separating it from this property on Springwood Drive. There's a lot size reduction for the Springwood Drive property from 12,500 square feet to 11,336 square feet. These are pictures of the Ashwood Drive property and the Springwood Drive property. Community Development's requesting approval of the rezoning from RD to R15 for that 0.05 acres and a lot size reduction of 1487 Springwood Drive to 11,336 square feet. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Staub. Any questions for Mr. Staub? Mr. Phillips?
See if I can get to work today. The, on that, so their rear yard setback for the fence would be right on the property line that, for the enlarged lot?
Well, it doesn't go all the way to the road.
Correct. So it wouldn't have a front yard setback for a privacy fence? It would have a rear yard setback for a privacy fence?
Yeah, there's no rear setback, so it can go up to the property line.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. At this time, we'd like to have the applicant come forward and tell us a little bit about your plan. Good evening and welcome.
Good evening, everybody. My name's Kyle Vincent, applicant for this. Basically, our property, like you saw, has a very just small, almost unusable backyard right now. We've got small kids. Met the owner of the duplex. He has no plans for the property, so we're seeing if we could just enlarge our backyard a little bit and give our kids the space to play. It's totally overgrown bamboo right now, and there's honestly a bunch of trash back there. There's some tires and stuff in the bamboo, and I'm just gonna clean it up, level it out, make a backyard for my family. That's all, all the plans we have for it. So, I don't know if that's what you guys are looking for, or what.
Very good. No, it's, uh, small kids need a little place to run around.
Yeah. So, as you guys saw, the front yard is not really usable, either. There's a creek that runs through the front yard. It's a little handcuff of space there.
There you go. Any questions for the applicant guys? All right. Thank you, Mr. Vincent.
All right.
All right. This is a public hearing. If anybody in attendance would like to come forward and speak in favor of or opposition to said application, please do so at this time. Let the record show, there's no one in attendance that wants to speak in favor of or opposition to said application. All right. Can I entertain a motion?
I'll make a motion for Z22-009 to be approved.
I got a motion to approve. Mr. Seagraves, I have a second. Ms. Ostriga, do I, can you vote, please? 6-1, with Mr. Phillips in opposition. So, application is approved. Good luck with your project and making a big backyard for your family. All right. The next item on our agenda is 2022-447. This is Z22-010 to allow for rezoning from FC to R10 for the development of two single-family homes, .49 acres, landlot 592. This is 1577 Roswell Street. Mr. Brad Thompson is the applicant, and Mr. Staub, can you give us the background on this, please?
Yes, sir. Rezoning case is E22-010. The applicant's Brad Thompson. Your recommendation will go to Mayor and Council on October 17th. Subject property is 1577 Roswell Street. It's almost half an acre. There's a single-family home on the property. The applicant is wanting to rezone it from FC, future commercial, to R10 for two single, two single-family homes. Future land use is industrial mixed use. There's no change. This is the subject property, the half acres. They want to build a lot line here in the middle, so for two single-family homes. They have the R10 setbacks, front 25. There is a variance for the side setback from seven and a half to five feet and a rear of 25. They'll both be rear entry garages, and the stormwater detention will be on the rear of the lots. One of the lots will have its own access drive. The home to the east will share an access drive with a new development that adjoins that property by the same developer. And we are recommending the sidewalk and grass buffer be replaced. There's a side setback variance from seven and a half feet to five feet. Staff supports that. This is a conceptual home elevation for the homes. This is a picture of the subject property currently and some adjacent properties. Staff is recommending approval from FC to R10 for 1577 Roswell Street with the following conditions: standard conditions regarding the architectural composition, utilities will be underground, they have to comply with the city's tree ordinance, special conditions, the setbacks currently, I mean setbacks front 25, side 5, rear 25, have a minimum lot size of 10,000 square feet, minimum lot width of 50 feet, minimum driveway length of 22 feet. They'll both be rear entry. As I mentioned, the sidewalk and grass strip will be replaced. Have a maximum height of 35 feet, and they will meet all the fire access, water and sewer and stormwater requirements. Eighteen, they are conditioned to the site plan submitted with the application and the home elevation submitted with the application. Happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Staub? Thank you, sir. At this time, we'd like to have the applicant come forward and tell us a little bit about the plan.
Good evening. My name's Brad Thompson with PM Builders. Joey always does such a great job. There's not a whole lot more to add, other than I can tell you that these houses will be about 3,000 square feet in size, and when we build them, which will probably be a couple of years, because I've got a couple of other projects in front of it, the price point will be in the 700s, actually, in a couple of years, who knows, but 700s right now is the plan. It's pretty much like we've done in Williams Park for the last three, four years, same thing, just kind of our lot split with our typical house that we build. I guess I'll just open it up for any questions, if there are any.
For the record, I spoke with Mr. Thompson via the telephone earlier, and we both lied to each other. You didn't shine your head, and I did not fix my head. True story. Anyway, any, any questions for the applicant? That's true, it happened. Mr. Bentley?
I just have a couple of questions more related to how these houses are gonna go together. I know you have the property to the west there, or northwest.
To the east, anyway. I know what you're, yeah.
East, I'm sorry. It is east. But, so there are gonna be four houses in a row there.
Correct.
And so, as I understand it, the middle two houses out of those four would have a shared drive. Is that right, or?
It is, it is correct. It's not really, I don't know that I would use the term "shared drive" because it's actually an easement or maybe even owned by the city. I'm not clear on that yet. I'm trying to get that cleared up through Title Search. But, yes, to answer your question, they will both access off of that 15-foot, well, the easement is 15-foot. The driveway may not be that much, but yes.
All right. And the other question was, I know the elevation drawings that we get in these packages are kind of placeholders, more or less.
Right.
But, uh, so you have four houses in a row there, and I guess I'm just concerned that there's some variety there, that they're not all just elevations with board and batten, that there's some other materials mixed in there. Can you tell us kind of what you have planned?
I was gonna make them all exact carbon copies, so they're very boring looking, so I can't sell them, but no.
People will buy them no matter what you build. We know that.
Well, I mean, I can, I can vary up the elevations to some degree. The, the house that we have planned here, because we're doing this with rear-entry garages, I don't have a lot of floor plans that fit when I have to put the driveway in on the same lot. And so, the house, this, this particular home that's, that was shown up on the screen, I think is 29 feet wide. Now, there, I could vary that plan up, but right now, they're all the same. Now, how, what we do with the elevation, we can do some things. This one, this particular plan has a second-story porch that comes off the master bedroom, which is pretty cool, and we kind of like it, and it did, it did well when we've built it before. So, we'll have to give that some thought. I mean, I'm not gonna sit here and tell you that we won't, that they won't be exactly, they won't look exactly the same, because I don't want that either. If I'm gonna put my name on this like anything else, I put my name on, I want it to be attractive, and I want people to think well of it. So, we'll do what we can. We may have to come up with a new plan to mix it in there, but this is just, as you say, it's a placeholder.
Okay, so I'm trying to fix in my mind, because as you mentioned, you build a lot of stuff in our neighborhood. So, you got the houses that are, that you, I guess you finished one and about finished the other one on Whitfield.
Mm-hmm.
So, one of those is almost all board and batten, and the other one's got some brick on it.
Mm-hmm.
So, is that kind of what you have in mind, those kind of houses, or is it more like the houses over on Matthews?
Well, Matthews Street was, that's a different, I mean, that was a lower price point at a little different time. So, it's, to answer your question, I don't have anything preconceived at this point. We can mix up some brick. We can do some things to try to make it look different, yes. But, again, I don't have that, at this point, I don't have anything preconceived. If that's what you're saying you want to see, maybe what we need to do is have some sort of an opportunity at some point to say, okay, look, when we actually get down to putting these houses in here, these are the elevations that I'm looking at, and maybe, I mean, we're not opposed to making changes. I mean, we try to do as much as we can to make everybody happy. So, maybe that's the thing we need to do, is try to, you know, have an opportunity to sit down and talk about elevations at some point.
Sure. Well, as you know, I mean, those lots and those houses are sort of the entrance to Williams Park neighborhoods, so.
They are.
We would obviously, or want them to look good.
Sure, I understand, and so do I.
All right. That's all my questions. Thanks.
Any other questions for the applicant? Mr. Martin, is there any, any way to add verbiage or add something to, you know, increase the dialogue with these guys and make them happy, or?
What? It's on. Okay, I couldn't see the light. Um, I mean, we tie them to the elevations provided in general, so it's not out of the realm for them to come back and have brick or have some other material. The thing we're trying to do from a conceptual standpoint is have, you know, a general vision of what he's doing. Whether the facades are exactly the same or not, it doesn't typically happen at that point, but the architecture is in the same manner that it was presented to the council, and if it's not, then they have to come back and get an amendment to that plan to be able to do something else. So, if he's, if he's showing a craftsman-style house, and then he comes back in with a European cottage-style house, then we would reject that at permitting and say, you need to get this, you need to build a craftsman-style house, or you need to get a zoning amendment to change that. But if he's doing a craftsman-style house, and he showed board and batten on the beginning, and then he, he switched components to brick, that would go through permitting, and it would probably get approved, because the architecture of the houses still has the same elements that he presented during the council, during council and P and Z. But, there, there is flexibility built into that. If you want to mandate something, then I think you guys, you know, you can require a stipulation, you know, the two houses are not to be, have the same facade materials or whatever, or have to have a mixture of facade materials, or there's gotta be an architectural difference between two. That, that's up to you guys.
I, I, I mean, I don't think, trying to restrict you to, this is what you're gonna do exactly at this point in time is fair to anybody involved, and I don't think that's something that, that would generate the best plan for the community either. I think that having decent dialogue open with the neighbors is probably the best suit for getting them happy and, and you selling at the highest price.
You know, I mean, I've been in this community long enough, and I think I've proven in the past that I'm willing to work with people, try to find compromises. I mean, you know, I'll do, again, we want the same thing as you want most of the time.
Most of the time. He's right there. Any other questions for the applicant? I, I think we can leave it at that, that you will.
Well, I just, I mean, I don't, I don't wanna, like I'm, like you said, we're not wanting to mandate what he does, but I don't know. I guess I would just appreciate maybe seeing the elevations, and so we have some opportunity to discuss that with you before you actually, everything's set in stone.
Ethan, I will give you my word. We will contact you.
All right.
Okay.
Good deal.
Well done, Mr. Thompson. All right. This is a public hearing. At this time, we'd like to ask if there's anyone in attendance that would like to come forward and speak in favor of or opposition to this application, please come now. Okay. The record show, there's no one in attendance that would like to come forward and speak in favor of or opposition to this application. All right. At this time, we'd like to, I would like to entertain a motion. This is Mr. Bentley's ward.
Um, yeah, I'll make a motion to approve Z22-010.
I have a motion to approve, Mr. Bentley. I have a second, Mr. Phillips. Please vote your conscience. Mr. Thompson, your stellar record of getting applications approved is not disappointed. Good luck with your project, sir, and your ride back to South Carolina. All right. The next item on our agenda is item 2022-451. This is a plat approval for three lots, for a three-lot subdivision under the R15 zoning requirements, landlot 384. This is 1.87 acres, 825 Austin Drive. Sue Kaplan is the applicant, and Mr. Staub, can you give us the background?
Yes, sir. Both these next two items are plat approvals. There's no rezoning involved, no variances involved. This property is 825 Austin Drive. Your recommendation will go to council actually next week. This is the subject property. It's a little, under two acres. It is zoned R15, as is everything else around it. This is the proposed subdivision plat, so it'll have three single-family homes facing Austin Drive with the common detention area in the back of the property. I have the R15 setbacks, front 35, side 10, and rear of 30. That's basically it. There's no variances required, no rezoning required. The staff is recommending approval of the subdivision.
All right. We have any questions for Mr. Staub? Thank you, sir. At this time, we'd like to ask the applicant to come forward and tell us a little bit about your application. Good evening and welcome.
Good evening. My name is Brian Gordon. I'm with Hearth Custom Homes, and we're actually, we're the, representing the homeowner, Ms. Kaplan. The proposal is that for the three-lot subdivision, Ms. Kaplan is looking to build a house for her and her husband in the middle, and then her son and her son's family on the left, and then her daughter and her daughter's family on the right. Ms. Kaplan would have liked to be here tonight, but her son's wife is being induced, so their families are increasing, and they're looking to be closer together.
Awesome. That's a compound.
Yes, yes.
All right. Do we have any questions for the applicant? You guys want to know anything specific about the plans and that kind of thing, or? It's up to you. Any questions? All right. Sorry, I think I just snorted. Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mr. Gordon.
Thank you.
All right. This is a public hearing. Stop laughing, April. This is a public hearing. At this time, we'd like to ask if there's anyone in attendance that would like to come forward and speak in favor of or opposition to this application. Okay. Let the record show that we have a very attentive audience that does not want to speak in favor of or opposition to. At this time, we'd like to entertain a motion. I have a motion to approve Mr. Rice, and I have a second by Mr. Howard. Please vote. Mr. Gordon, your application is approved 7-0. Good luck with the compound. All right. The next item on our agenda is 2022-452. This is the plat approval for two-lot subdivision under the GC zoning requirements. It's 3.3 acres, landlot 444. This is 912 Daniel Drive. GFAC Logistics LLC is the applicant. Mr. Staub's the background, please.
Good evening. This is 912 Daniel Drive. It's at the corner of Atlanta Road and Daniel Drive. It is about 3.3 acres, so in general, commercial. It has an existing warehouse building on it. It had three single-family homes on the property, but those are demolished. So, only thing on the property is the warehouse building. They want to subdivide this property with the GC setbacks, front 40 on Daniel, 33 on Atlanta Road, and a side setback of 10 and a rear setback of 30. They're not proposing any development on the property, just to be able to subdivide it. This is the subdivision line. And the setbacks. So, it meets all the GC requirements. There's no variances required. The staff is recommending approval of the subdivision. I don't think the applicant could make it tonight, just so you know.
So, who's gonna present for the applicant? You gonna do that, too?
If, if there's questions, I'll be happy to.
Do we have any questions for Mr. Staub's for the city at this point? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Staub's. All right. We'd like to have the applicant come forward and speak in, or tell us a little bit about the application. Okay. Any, any questions for the applicant? May as well have fun with it. We don't have any questions anyway, so I guess there's no problem. This is a public hearing. At this time, we'd like to ask if there's anyone in attendance that would like to come forward and speak in favor of or opposition to this application, and I was wondering about that. So, good evening and welcome.
My name is Johnny Turner, and I live at 902 Daniel Drive, adjacent to the strip there where the commercial building is. I've been at that location for 48 years. When that building was built, it's like I live on Mars, because I'm actually in Cobb County, so we have no communication whatsoever. We had no idea that this building was being built until the day the graders come in and started tearing down the trees and putting that building in the middle of a residential neighborhood. They were three homes addressing Atlanta Road and my house to the backside of the lot, and they were supposed to be in, at that time, a 50-foot undisturbed buffer between commercial and residential. That property was destroyed all the way up to three foot of the property line, and I've been dealing with erosion. I, I see Ms. Evans is the commissioner of this. I would love for her to come to my house and look at my side of that property that I've been living with for 48 years. We've been at, access to this subdivision, they're wanting to build. Does anybody know where that traffic is gonna go?
I have not been made aware of any different ingress or egress to either of the two properties, and I believe that would best be addressed by the applicant, and it may behoove us to table this until that applicant could be available to address that with you.
At the time that this commercial building was being built, I don't know, I don't really want to say the name, but whoever was involved with the planning and zoning and everything came up and had a meeting on the street corner with me and three other neighbors, and they were saying, as long as the curb cut is on Atlanta Road, because I'm assuming the reason that property got that commercial building built there is because it was connected to commercial property on Atlanta Road, would you be okay if the curb cut went to Atlanta Road? And me and Ms. Bo bailed and two others, yeah, okay, you know, that's not gonna affect us, you know. Two days later, concrete was being poured for the curb cut on Daniel Drive. There's no reason for commercial property and access and tractor-trailer trucks and all that stuff coming on a residential street, and we've been dealing with that for 48 years. all that stuff coming on a residential street, and we've been dealing with that for 48 years. And now it scares me when they're talking about redevelopment, because I understand why the curb cut would be so easy to do on Daniel Drive is not to have to pay for a decal lane and all that on Atlanta Road. We're having that same problem with the county on the adjacent corner. They tried to put, I think it was 16 townhomes on that four acres. And they wanted to put the curb cut on Daniel Drive, and there's only 40 feet from there to Atlanta Road. It's just not feasible to put that amount of traffic for the people that live on Daniel Drive already.
I did see the other lot that you're referring to that is on the other corner, and I do agree, it is a small parcel. I did not know the county was entertaining such a thing.
Well, they tried to put, two, two years ago, a convenience store and a gas station. And we all got together, and I think they pretty much tabled that, and it went on the corner of Old Concord and Atlanta Road. That's where it went. All right, so now they tried to come back and was going to put 16 townhomes on that lot.
Mr. Turner, let's just focus on the one item we're looking at right here. I'm not trying to cut you off. I want you to have your full spiel, and I understand your frustration 100%. But let's focus on the parcel that we're talking about.
Okay, what's going to be on this lot?
Mr. Martin, do we have any idea what the plan is? Or they just?
He has not presented a plan to us. The request is to subdivide the lot in accordance to the zoning ordinance.
Okay. Well, this is my least favorite type of, of issue, and you do not have an applicant here. So I hear you loud and clear, all right? But is there anything else you want to add? Because I think there might be some other people here that would like to add some comments as well. Thank you, Mr. Turner. Anybody else? Come on. Good evening and welcome.
Hi, Mr. Powell. And board members, my name is Darrell Howell, and I live at 760 Daniel Drive, which is further down the road from Mr. Turner. But one of the things that concerns me is all the water runoff from that property comes down Daniel Drive in an open ditch. And if they, depending on what they put on that property, it's going to really increase the water flow down through there. And the water flow has already been a problem. So I just want the council members to think about that. And it concerns us what might eventually go there. As Mr. Turner said, they were going to put a, a gas station, convenience store on that corner. We didn't want that. That's not good for our community. It doesn't, we want the same things you guys do with improving the community and how nice businesses there are residential. So we don't have opposing viewpoints, really. So we would like to know what they want to put there, and maybe we would, we would be all for that. We don't know until we know what's going to be there.
I understand that 100%. And I've got a, a good friend lives on Daniel Drive, and I'm very acquainted with the quaintness and quietness of that street.
It's a nice street. We walk our dogs up and down the street at, you know, night and everything. It's a nice little community.
Yeah, absolutely. All right.
That's all.
Thank you very much, Mr. Howell. Anybody else? Come on back up, Ms. Turner. I, I, I wasn't trying to cut you off. I just want us to focus on, on the issue that we're talking about.
You mentioned that you knew someone who lived on the street and the quietness and everything of it. You can ask my wife. Sunday afternoon, I picked up four, 10 40-caliber shells off of the curb right there where the access of this commercial property is onto Daniel Drive. So that's, when you call the quietness and, you know, the neighborhood, it's not really that nice there. The apartments, we hear gunfire all the time, and we heard it the other day, and I went up there, and I've got 10 40-caliber shells that come out of an automatic handgun. And, you know, I don't know what y'all call quiet, but that scares me.
Yeah, that would scare me, too. I agree 100%. All right. Mr. Martin, would you please opine?
I just, I want to reiterate, this is a, this is approval to subdivide the land from one lot into two lots. The existing building will remain on the property. There is an existing stormwater management facility in the northwest corner of the property, just north of the, the existing building. If anything were to be built on the parcel that's being subdivided, they would have to go through all the permitting requirements. So that would address stormwater management. They would have to either do an above-ground facility or below-ground facility, depending on what their, what their development plan is. But the property is zoned general commercial by right, right now. So they could tear down that existing building and build a gas station right now without approval from the city council or for, from the P and Z board. This request is not related to the zoning of the property with respect to changing the allowable uses out there. We're, the board with respect to this request is charged with, does the, does the subdivision of land meet the requirements of the zoning ordinance? And from staff's review of it, it, it does meet that. We don't look at use and all that with respect to subdividing the land if it's maintaining the same zoning district.
Okay.
I'll be happy to answer anything else if y'all.
Yeah, I think that might generate a couple more questions. Anybody else want to weigh in on this? I mean, be 100% honest, we've been up here quite a while, you and I. And there's, there's a few of these we have where the applicant doesn't show up. It just happens. It's never, never comfortable when the applicant doesn't show up and we have opposition because they, we have nobody to answer any questions about, you know, what the opposition is about because it very well could be mitigated at this point in time. We are a review board for mayor and council. We're not the final say. So, I'd like to say a lot of things. I'm going to stop there before I get myself into trouble. Mr. Bentley, go ahead.
I would say this will be on the agenda next Monday for mayor and council, and the applicant will be here.
The applicant will be here, so we're not important enough for the applicant. I got it. The applicant will be here next Monday. It is on mayor and council's agenda for, what is that, the 19th? And regardless of what happens here, because I'm not going to try to influence what this board does, it's not my job. I would highly recommend you guys speak your piece. All right. That's a question from Mr. Martin. I'm fairly certain I know the answer to it, but, Mr. Martin?
Yeah, I mean, it's your board. You do what you want to do.
Okay. It's our board, and this is our latest and greatest addition to of the zoning ordinance, Jill Gordon Evans Warden. I'll lay the motion in her hands. So without, is there any further, before I do that, is there any further discussion? Any comments anybody else wants to make? And good luck.
Turn on the microphone. Thank you. I had mentioned that very briefly when I spoke earlier, and, Mr. Turner, I didn't live in Smyrna 48 years ago. I've only been here for about 25, and I understand your frustration without having an applicant here. And although what the board is asked to do tonight is within the zoning, as Mr. Martin did state, I feel like as doing the right thing by the citizens, that's what the board is charged to do. So I will make a motion that we table it, and if the rest of the board does agree to table the meeting and the decision until the applicant can speak, I think that we owe that to the citizenry as a board and to your neighbors. So I will motion to table it, and that is my motion.
Okay, we have a motion to table this item. Do we have a second? Ms. Ostriga, we have a second. The item is tabled with a vote of 7-0. And for all of you guys on Daniel Drive that may not be in the city, remember that these guys, they care about you, too. So, good luck as we go forward, and hopefully we'll see you next month. All right. The next item on our agenda is an ordinance. It's 2022-21. This is approval of a code amendment to the appendix A of the zoning ordinance pertaining to townhome design standards with an effective date of October 1st, 2022. This is to authorize mayor, the mayor to review and sign all documents related thereto. Mr. Martin, the background, please.
All right. The city of Smyrna adopted a townhome moratorium back on March 15th, 2021. Just prior to that adoption, the, the mayor created a townhome development committee, and they, they were tasked with reviewing city standards with respect to townhome development and developing, you know, a cohesive plan for future development. Over the year and a half that we've worked on this plan, you know, the, the committee met about six times. We finally presented a, a draft ordinance. They reviewed it. We went back and forth and modified some things with respect to that. The committee members that were on that were Councilman Travis Lindley. He was chair. Corky Welch and Tim Gould sat on that committee. Staff members that participated were myself, Joey Staubes, Kalen Crowe, City Administrator Joe Bennett, and Deputy City Administrator Penny Moshery. So we've taken about a year and a half to get to this point. We've put together an ordinance that the committee wanted to move forward. So we're, we're here today to present that to the P and Z board. You guys can make your recommendation, and then mayor and council will take final action next week at the, the mayor and council meeting. This ordinance has been posted on our city website since the middle of last month. We also had a town hall meeting to present this to the public. So we, we've been collecting comments and so forth for the last month on this, and we've met with Building Association, the Brick Association, and, and received their comments, too. The main purpose and intent of the ordinance is to develop requirements to regulate the siting and architectural design of townhome project, projects, and create a cohesive design with the walkable development within the city of Smyrna. The regulations are intended to define elements of the, the development that support horizontal and vertical articulations and variations among the units that provide architectural interests and reinforce high-quality design and responsible site development practices to meet the goals of the city per our comprehensive plan. These next few slides, I'm going to roll through these. These are just real broad-based summaries of what we change within city zoning ordinance as it relates to townhome development. We adjusted the definition section of the zoning ordinance, section 402, to add architectural definitions for architectural elements through the ordinance. So it clearly defines what's a balcony, what's a, you know, what's a porch, what's a dormer, you know, all those architectural elements that, you know, a layperson may not know, but at least they'll be in this ordinance, so everyone is, clearly defines what is expected per the, the architectural feature. It also eliminates the numbering system in the zoning ordinance for definitions. When you start adding definitions, and you, you run into issues because we, we number each word. So adding definitions creates, you know, creates issues with sequencing issues within the ordinance. Applicability is the next section. This is the saying that this ordinance is going to apply to all new townhome developments unless exempted from the zoning ordinance. And plus, if there's any conflicts with other parts of the zoning ordinance, the design standards, as they pertain to townhomes, shall apply. The next section deals with minimum architectural design requirements. These design requirements are required for all townhome buildings, and they primarily deal with facade materials, building articulation, roofs, pitches, roof styles, window requirements, and screening of mechanical equipment. In addition to that, we have a design elements catalog, and there's four categories in this. And within each category, there are a list of elements, and the, the developers or home builders are going to have to pick one element from each of those categories to provide on each of their buildings. And those categories deal with private outdoor space, architectural projection, roof elements, and then unit facade variation. The next standards, they deal with bulk standards, and these are your building setbacks, building separation, your building height, unit width, and lot configuration. The next standard, the next section deals with live-work units. So we want to be able to provide in certain areas, such as your downtown central business district properties and your mixed-use properties, an opportunity for live-work units. And this section provides those minimum requirements for those live-work units. Site development standards is next, and this deals with, you know, driveway lengths, number of units per building, building orientation, open space requirements, utilities, and parking, and so forth. And then finally, we have a requirement for, required information for a zoning application. And this is just requiring clear and accurate understanding of the proposed project, and they need to provide the information to do that, site plan, detailed building elevations, material catalog, stuff like that. I'm going to run through each of those sections with a little bit more detail, just so you guys know what we're talking about. These are the terms that we dealt with in the definition section, and these are the ones that we added. So we define balcony, bay window, gable, parapet, pilasters, porch, turrets, stoop. So those are all terms that an architect will know. That's not all, that some of these terms aren't clear to, you know, laypeople. So we wanted to make sure that everyone understood what we were meaning by these terms and how they applied to this ordinance specifically. With respect to architectural design standards, we had facade requirements. The main issue is that we want architectural variation between the buildings. One, there's got to be modulation between the units, so one unit may be set forward a little bit further than the unit next to it. You have to have varied forms of roof forms, so you can't have one roof structure that is over the complete building with six units. You got to have, each unit has to have its own roof, and those roofs have to be varied from the roof next to it. Building elevations from the public and private street are going to require two, a minimum two stories of brick or stone facade material. And the remaining facade material must be cementitious or cement fiber product, so they can have board and batt, and they can have shake, but they have to be of, of cement fiber Side elevations adjoining the street must have, must be consistent with the front elevation, so they got to have a little bit of articulation, and then they have to have similar fenestration in architectural detail. Lap siding is not allowed to be used if it's visible from the public street. You know, if it's on the rear of the property of the building that, that's not visible from the street, they can use lap siding on that elevation. from the street, they can use lap siding on, on that elevation. Roofs. As I stated before, roofs have to be distinct from the other units and through separation staggering and, and offsets. You must have no, if you have a pitched roof, your slope can't be less than six twelve. If you have a flat roof, your parapet height has to be a minimum forty-two inches in height. Garages, each unit is required to have a two car garage unless approved by mayor and council. If they want to have a one car garage, they got to get that approved through council during the zoning process. The minimum requirement for the garage space is eighteen feet by twenty-two and they got to have decorative garage doors. These are just sort of, you know, these are sort of illustrations, sort of what we're trying to get across with respect to varying roof styles and, and articulation between the units and, and varying depths as well as the brick elevations, you know. That's what we're trying to reflect. And then on the corner units, we're requiring those fenestrations, wraparound porches, stuff like that to create some depth on the units. And those are required sort of intersecting streets. Also with the architectural design standards, we're requiring minimum front porch or stoop requirements of thirty square feet with a minimum depth, depth of six feet. The rear patio has to have a minimum area of fifty feet. Windows need to be recessed by one inch, one three quarter inches as well as the mechanical components have to be screened from the public or private right away. So, whether they put that on the rear of the building or they put it within the roof structure somehow, those elements can't be visible to the public. They have to be screened somehow. And these are just some examples of what we're trying to achieve and, you know, some guys may do these, these types of designs and some may not. But we're just trying to show the elements that we're trying to, to achieve with some of this stuff. With the design elements catalog, like I said before, there are four categories that they've got to address and they've got to select one requirement from each of those. So, a main category is a private outdoor space and they can either do that through a front porch of sixty square feet, a front facing balcony of sixty square feet, a rear patio or deck of a hundred and fifty square feet or rooftop terrace of a hundred and fifty square feet. And some of these will match with the architectural, they can incorporate the, the design requirements from the section that we just went over. You know, if they included a porch or a, or a balcony across the front of the house, they can, they can meet these requirements. Architectural projection, so they can provide a projection window, either bay or bow, turret, covered balcony or front porch or any, the ordinance provides them an opportunity to provide an alternative way to meet this requirement if, if they submit it to the committee development director for approval. Roof elements, they can either provide dormers or a front gable or pediment, roof terrace, rooftop terrace, varied gable system, cornice detailing or an alternative approved by the committee development director. And then finally, unit or facade variation, and this is required when there's more than five units that front on a single block. Change in brick and stone color or a change in masonry material, a change in window composition. So, you know, the number of windows or the size of windows. And then a projection or recess of an architectural feature that is a minimum five feet deep or fifteen feet tall. Then we'll get to the bulk standards and we have setback requirements and these deal with the overall development, which is a front setback of fifty, a side setback of twenty-five and a rear setback of thirty. Then you have your interior development setbacks and these are from the interior roads within the development. And for a front entry town home, which means your garage is on the front and faces the public street, you have to have a, a minimum setback of twenty feet from the back of sidewalk or outside edge of the landscape zone. If it's a rear entry town home, meaning your garage is on the backside of the house on a private alley in the back, you can have a front setback of twenty or ten feet at that point. So, you can pull the, the building closer to the street. And then a street side setback of fifteen feet. There's required building separation. So, buildings, minimum building separations from front to front is fifty, side to side is twenty, side to rear is forty and rear to rear is forty. And these are similar to what is currently allowed today in the zoning ordinance. With the exception of side to side, that is a reduction from thirty feet down to twenty. Maximum building height, that's increased to forty-five feet or three stories to allow for three story units and also allow for the opportunity for rooftop terrace. Minimum floor area per unit is a thousand square feet and that's a, that's a reduction from fifteen hundred square feet. And finally, the, the board wanted to address minimum unit width and they want to maintain a minimum width of twenty-four feet. Lots within the development shall be rectilinear in form, you know, so they've got to be, they got to have a rectangular shape in form. They can't have a pie shape or some curvilinear form. The rectangular irregular shaped lots are prohibited. The creation and establishment of spite strips, flag lots or other shapes that are not rectilinear in configuration are prohibited. Common improvements need to be located on standalone lots that are held by the HOA. Live work units, live work units shall only be allowed in mixed use in central business district. They have to be owner occupied and owner and proprietor of the business is only one that can operate the business out of there. Each live work unit should contain twenty-four hundred square feet of floor area and the commercial component has to, shall have been, shall be no less than five hundred square feet. And then we have a list of permitted uses within that. Professional office, workshop, design studio, professional services, travel agent, hairdresser, nail salon and then specialty retail type uses. And like I said, this is only for town homes that would be located in the central business district or in a, a mixed use zoning district. Design standards, this deals with the use of the property. A town home should only contain one single family attached dwelling unit and where applicable, the mix of uses and live, live work units are permitted and encouraged and these units shall be planned with an overall development and approved by the city council. The buildings, the town home buildings have a maximum of six units per building. There's a requirement for rear loaded garages for twenty-five percent of the units. A variance may be granted for that requirement if the topography or the site conditions don't call for or allow rear entry town homes. The relationship of the units external to the development, all units fronting on an external public or private street shall face the subject street with the front and primary facade and shall provide access from the interior of the development. The best way I can explain that is if, say there was a development on Atlanta Road, they could front those units on Atlanta Road, but the access to those would have to be internal to the property. Driveways, the driveway length is a minimum twenty-two feet for front entry and twenty feet for rear entry garages. And for units that adjoin each other, the driveways shall be paired together to create larger landscape areas and the end units should be allowed to have side entry garages if they want to provide those. Streets, the streets within this, in the development shall be interconnected. They're prohibiting cul-de-sacs and other dead end streets unless there's a planned phase and it's going to continue on at that point. Sidewalks and streetscape elements are required on all internal streets in the development along external road frontages. All streets within the development shall provide a five foot sidewalk on one side and then there should be an eight foot landscape zone on either side of the street for, on the back of curb. Streets within the development shall be either twenty-two feet or twenty-six feet in width and that's going to be determined by the unit heights. If it's over thirty feet from the eaves to the, to the, to the grade, it's going to require a twenty-six foot street. If it's below thirty feet, then it's going to be a twenty-two foot street. And that's, that's a international fire code requirement that we're dealing with there. Open space, each development shall set aside a minimum of five percent of the site in open space and then there's minimum recreation area requirements of one acre per fifty units. And, and then it goes in to talk about how those open space areas need to be designed. And this is sort of showing sort of what we're talking about with pairing of the garages to create larger green spaces from the houses. And then on your lower picture showing when you have a landscape strip to be able to provide an area for the tree, for the trees that's off of, that's out of the property of the property owner and is in control of the, the HOA. So, those trees are maintained in perpetuity. And there are questions with respect to, hey, are these trees going to damage the roadway and this and that? Will, our tree ordinance picks specific trees to be street trees. In addition, requires root barrier systems where these trees are located to, to prevent, you know, upheaving of the sidewalk and, and the, the roadways. Utilities, it's just requiring every unit to have its own utilities and every unit to have its own metering system. And then easements for utilities are provided in the common ownership, whereas the lateral services and connections shall take place. Parking, you're requiring a minimum two spaces per unit and then you're requiring a third of a space per unit of guest parking. And if we're going to shrink the roadway down, we got to provide adequate guest parking. So, you don't have a lot of on-street parking on those smaller roadways. Fire protection and accessibility. The, the, the town home development shall be designed to provide proper access to all units. Rear access is required and, and you know, they need to provide the appropriate easements for that access. Common property, they need to have a mandatory HOA. The HOA is responsible for the open space in any, any private infrastructure such as detention facilities, water sewer, if that's private. And then that HOA needs to, needs to conform to the Georgia condominium act and that way, that HOA doesn't dissolve within twenty years of enactment. And finally, we have zoning application requirements, site plan, landscape plan. They need a plan for the proposed amenities and how that's all going to be provided. And then the elevations with respect to general architectural style, proposed materials, colors and then how they're going to have variation between the units. So, like I said before, if you want to file a comment on this ordinance and get your voice heard, this, this document is, is located on the city's website. You can also contact Joey Stobbs, his, his email is on the screen. We'll accept them all the way up and we'll pass, pass those comments along to mayor and council for consideration. But that's all I have. I'll be happy to answer any questions. Yeah?
All right, we're going to, we're going to censor Mr. Rice for the balance of the evening. That's a joke, Earl. I love you. All right. Well done, Mr. Martin. Any questions for Mr. Martin, Ms. Phillips?
I got a quick one, I hope. Are there any, in the interior setbacks, are there any interior or exterior build two lines?
As far as like a maximum setback from the road?
Correct.
No.
Okay, thank you.
I mean, typically, we're dealing with infill development and I would probably agree with you, probably in, you know, a greenfield situation, we may have to require that. But the sites are so tight right now. I mean, they're, they're, they're trying to be as close to the street as possible because of this, the constraints that they deal with, with geometry and all that stuff for the site that typically it's, it's not an issue. That you're going to have a, a unit that's fifty feet away from the road. It, it's just not going to happen at this point.
Sometimes you end up with those odd parcels, like you said, and then you have some, I don't know, but they were, you answered the question, yeah, that there are no build two lines.
Yeah, there's no, there's no build two lines. We didn't put them in because we didn't think it was going to be necessary because just the site constraints that typically happen in infill development, that there's not a lot of area to work with. So, you know, for the most part, they're struggling to fit everything in the areas that are allowed right now to, to develop.
Any other questions?
The overall building height is forty-five feet. So, the way we calculate building height is the average grade on all four sides of the building to the midpoint of the sloped roof between the highest, highest sloped roof portion, sometimes there's multiple, from the ridge to the eaves of that highest sloped roof.
But you also had the three stories max.
It's just saying you're allowed to three stories to, to go ahead and, and do that.
But I guess, I think, if you have three stories, if you had a rooftop to that, then you'd be, actually you have four stories.
The only rooftop would be a rooftop terrace and that's not a story. That's just an outdoor space that's on the roof.
So, you don't consider it as, as a story?
No.
Okay. And then, did we think about some maybe more, more modern elevations?
Modern elevations?
Architecture. More modern architecture.
As far as the materials and having brick?
As far as design?
We didn't have a specific elevation that we were trying to set these standards to. We were just trying to deal with general requirements as far as the facade material and just the general principles of having individual building, variations between the units and making sure those units look like they were individual attached buildings.
But the design that you have in the presentation, it's not something that's set in stone?
No, no. Those were just trying to articulate visually what we, what we trying to see, but that doesn't mean that those units have to look that way.
I mean, like another way of saying it, Mrs. Strick, is that they could drop in a modern looking building elevation as long as it had the variation and it met the other standards. Like, in fairness to her, like there was a lot of repetition in what we were looking at, they're more traditional craftsmen type. And, and yeah, so like maybe, maybe we could drop a elevation that represented a more modern look. Maybe that would be an easy fix, but you know, to help with just the visual of it all. Anything else? I didn't mean to cut you off. All right, Mr. Bentley, I believe you had a comment or question?
Yeah, I just wanted to make a comment really. Clearly, the committee and the staff have put a lot of work into this and, and I think it's going to make a big difference to the town halls and sort of how the city grows in that area. area. And all I wanted to say is I just appreciate all that effort because I think it is gonna be worth it. Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Well said, Mr. Bentley. Anybody else? All right, Mr. Martin, anything else you wanna add? I know Mr. Rice really would like for you to go into further grainy detail on some of this.
The Broncos are playing at eight o'clock, so I'd like to get home too, so.
Well, I can hold you up just a little bit. All right, this is a public hearing. At this time, we'd like to ask if there's anyone in attendance that would like to come forward and speak in favor of or opposition to this ordinance or this change to the ordinance. Officer Steve? Okay. All right, if there's no further discussion, I would like to entertain a motion on this change to the ordinance. Oh, I have a motion to approve Mr. Rice and a second Mr. Howard. All right, this, this ordinance change is approved seven zero. And for the record, we all stayed awake for the totality of the presentation, Mr. Martin. Well done. You had us on our edge of our seat. Is there any further discussion this evening before we approve the minutes from the previous meeting? All right, well, I need a motion to approve the minutes as presented from the August eighth, two thousand twenty-two meeting. All right, we have a motion to approve Mr. Seagraves. We have a second Mr. Bentley. And the minutes are going to be approved five oh two with two in the abstain. The only other thing I would like to add is we'd like to welcome Mr. Jo- Ms. Jo- good God, Joel.
I told you I'd answer anything.
She said she'd answer anything, well she almost got that opportunity. No, we, we would like to welcome Ms. Gordon Evans, Ms. Jill Gordon Evans, to the zoning board.
Greetings, thank you.
Yeah, thank you for your, your volunteering, we really appreciate it. And I know that Ms. O needed some companionship up here from the feminine side. She's battled long and hard with all of us masculines, but, and she does a fantastic job as well. All right, with that, I'd like to call this meeting at seven thirteen in the PM so everybody can get home and watch Monday Night Football. I had a water.